We're streaming and recording and the mics are live.
All right, and it is six o'clock, so we will call the Monday, September 22 regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Kuchko.
Here.
Lori Starbuck.
Here.
Don Cuskey.
Here.
Andrew Coop.
Here.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Johnson.
Here.
Marion Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
And Nellie Shire.
Here.
And Randy, was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty five point nine zero, the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice Lake Chronotype, to the Eau Claire Leader and radio stations W G M C and W A Q E indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. I'll now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And it's exciting to be back with our students in school, so now we get to hear about all the exciting things that they're doing in our building. So we will start out with our Rice Lake High School. Parents, grandparents, anybody who wants pictures, there's a nice little spot over here by Mr. Droste. You're welcome to go up there for pictures, video, whatever works. And then our students will come up to the podium and. Go from there.
You go over there.
Yeah. Over here by me. Mr. Bycey, you're good. Here, you can come right over here.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Bycey, Assistant Principal at the high school. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce to you and kind of go over the reasons why myself, Mr. Koelski and Mr. Koelski nominated John to be recognized in front of you tonight. John is a senior, like I mentioned. He's the son of Paul and Danette Barofka. And I don't really know where to start with this guy, other than I had to get him here in September because he's been going through his programming, has been checking off his goals, and he's not going to be with us much longer than that. In just a couple of weeks, he's actually going to be enrolled full-time at Northwoods Technical College to get his C D L. So to do that, he's had to work his tail off, and he's done that, including finishing up his economics course at the beginning here of his senior year, so that he didn't have to worry about coming back to the high school to complete that C D L program. He's a man of few words. He doesn't come to my office, so he stays out of trouble through his four years. But I think he's probably done more kind of quote-unquote "cool" things than I've already done. In fact, I know, again, it's hard to get some information out of him, but he spent the whole summer working up in the Yukon, gold mining with his father and running equipment and things like that. So a very independent young man, I know that since I believe he turned sixteen years old and got his driver's license and kind of grabbed that independence, he's been doing some of his own business, doing some hauling and things like that. And he plans to put that C D L to good use doing that. I also remarked here that he's excelled in the classroom in general, having a, he's going to graduate with a very high GPA. But he's also excelled like in our C T pathways of taking the welding courses and things like that. So John's going to be an entrepreneur, I'm sure, and he's going to be able to kind of live doing what he loves to do. And he's just a prime example when you set goals, two things, what you can do with those goals and what you can do through the high school process of the different options that we have available to kids. And we're looking forward to seeing all the things you're going to do. We may have to hire you someday.
He's starring in Gold Rush, right?
Stop picture.
Picture time. Picture time.
He is.
Few words and less pictures.
All right, Rice Lake Middle School.
Sophie was not super excited about this either, being in front of a crowd. So I don't know if mom and dad had to twist her arm a little bit, but we're very excited at the Rice Lake. So this is Sophie Rue. Her parents are Stephen Joe Rue. And at the Rice Lake Middle School, for this first one, we have our avant-garde staff nominate a student. And so right now Sophie has Spanish and health, and so this is what her teacher said about her. So this is from Mrs. Broome in Spanish. Sophie is a conscientious student, always prepared for class, always listening and participating in the learning target for the day. She can be counted on to answer questions. Sophie is polite and a positive role model in our class. So some great words from her. Mr. Louderback, our health teacher, said this about Sophie. Sophie has been a hard-working student so far this year, always gets her work done on time with high quality. She's great to have in class. So we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize everything that she brings to our school. She's an eighth grader, and so we depend on our eighth graders to be great leaders, and she's definitely that as well. So our student of the month is Sophie Rue.
All right. School Board Ambassador. Yeah. Now we'll move on to Hoggan Elementary.
My name is Erin Hunter. I'm the Librimedia Specialist for the elementary schools. And I'm the head of the specialist team at Hoggan Elementary. It is our pleasure to nominate Tatum Peterson as the September Student of the Month. Tatum exemplifies the warrior way one hundred percent of the time. In the hallway, lunchroom, playground, or classroom, Tatum is always safe, respectful, and responsible. He comes to the library, music, and art rooms eager to learn and follow directions while being a wonderful role model for other students. Tatum comes to the gym with a smile on his face and is always ready to follow the group plan on the first try and is a great leader. Most of all, Tatum is always respectful to staff and his peers. Tatum is a kind friend to everyone, no matter what grade, and is always willing to lend a hand. Tatum, thank you for helping make Hoggan Elementary a wonderful place.
Fabulous. Tantor Elementary.
Hi there. My name is Carla Gurnier, and I'm the art teacher at Tantor and Hoggan Elementary. This is Abigail Barclay. She's the daughter of Christie and Eric. She's in fourth grade, and on behalf of the specialist teachers at Tantor, we are nominating Abby as the September Student of the Month. This was easy to do. In music class, Abby is a hard-working, focused student who does very well with her musical skills. She is very helpful and kind to Ms. Cottington as the teacher and her classmates. Abby is the kind of student that Ms. Cottington knows will be listening engaged every time she's standing in front of the room and looks out to her. She is a quiet leader who is also willing to share ideas and opinions. Ms. Cottington is sure Abby's leadership will continue to grow during her last year in the Tantor Music Classroom. In art class, Abby is a pleasure to teach. Abby brings her sparkling personality with her each week to our classroom, even wearing her specially-created art dress much of the time since. First grade, which is such a joy. Abby thinks like an artist, planning, asking questions, looking at examples, and really thinking things through creatively before beginning each project. Abby is a leader in our classroom, and I can always depend on her to help me or a classmate without complaint. Abby shows up each week with positivity, excited, and ready to make art. Abigail sets a good example in the library and can always be counted on to follow the warrior way. She is kind to everyone, works well with her classmates, and is eager to help others when they need it. Abigail always has a smile on her face and is ready to learn or talk about her hobbies or what she's been reading, even once recommending a book to Ms. Hunter. Thank you to Abby for being a good leader and a role model. In F I A D, Abby has a kind heart. She is always a great role model and is willing to help if someone is in need. Abby finds ways to solve problems and makes everyone else's experience positive, and that's from Mr. in the Gym. So thank you, Abby.
Hilltop Elementary.
Hi, my name is Audra Norton. I am the art teacher at Hilltop, and this is Jasmine Chun. She is a fourth grader there. In music, Mrs. Mockfuss wrote that Jasmine is a great student in music class. She always tries her best at every activity in music, whether it be singing, dancing, or playing instruments. Jasmine sets a good example and is a leader in the warrior way. Jasmine is always willing to try new things. She has enjoyed having her in music class throughout her elementary years. Coach Orr wrote, "In F I A D, Jasmine comes to class each day with a positive attitude, great effort, and a smile that always encourages others. She gives her best in every activity, shows excellent sportsmanship, and is always willing to help her classmates. Jasmine is a wonderful example of how to be active, respectful, and a team player. We are so proud to celebrate her." I'm her art teacher, and I'm a little bit biased because Jasmine is also an extremely talented artist, like you should see the stuff that she makes, very, very cool. But we are lucky at Rice Lake to have such a kind, calm, and creative student in Jasmine. She is hard-working and focused, but any conversation you have with her will leave you smiling. Her influence is clear in her classmates, her teachers, and all of her younger siblings, who so clearly admire her, because we all have our younger siblings too, and they talk about her and her art a lot, because I swear, you guys, it's so good. And I love that she doesn't take any flak from anyone either. I like that. In art, we need a little bit of that. In library, Jasmine serves as a good role model to her peers. She is eager to learn and contribute to class discussions. She helps her classmates and follows libraries' expectations, setting a good example for others. I rarely, or Mrs. Hunter, rarely sees her without a smile, and she shows excitement about the book she is reading. Thank you for being a great library student and role model, Jasmine.
The tag along or the commercial. So I'm Andrea Jervine ESL teacher, and I'm translating for Mom, so. Jasmine, la cual es la hija de Jeremias Chun y también de Elvia Chun. Fue escogida como la. Estudiante del mes por su creatividad, su innovación, y también por su liderazgo. No solo en la parte de música, Jasmine es una gran estudiante en la clase de música. Siempre se esfuerza al máximo en cada actividad musical que esté, ya sea cantando, bailando, o tocando instrumentos. Jasmine da un buen ejemplo y es líder al estilo de su vida, así como el warrior way, como un guerrero. Siempre está dispuesta a probar cosas nuevas. That's right. También ella en música, también ella disfruta como tenerla en su clase, simplemente no solo por todos estos años de la primaria, pero sobre todo por este año. En educación física, Jasmine viene a clase todos los días con una actitud positiva, un gran esfuerzo, una sonrisa de ánimo, que siempre está animando a los demás. Da de lo mejor de sí en cada actividad, muestra un excelente espíritu deportivo, siempre está dispuesta a ayudar a sus compañeros. Jasmine es un maravilloso ejemplo de cómo ser activo, respetuoso, trabajar en equipo, y estamos orgullosos de celebrarla. En arte, Rice Lake tiene la suerte de tener esta estudiante tan amable, tranquila, creativa como Jasmine es. Jasmine es trabajadora, se centra, pero siempre está centrada y concentrada en lo que tiene que hacer, pero cualquier conversación que tengas con ella te hará sonreír. Su influencia es clara en sus compañeros, sus maestros, y sus hermanos menores, quienes claramente la admiran. En la biblioteca, Jasmine siempre está en un, siempre es un buen modelo para sus compañeros delante de la clase de biblioteca. Está siempre ansiosa de aprender, a construir, y también a tener todas las discusiones de la clase. Por esto ella ha sido escogida la estudiante del mes.
All right, congratulations to all of our students that we've recognized this evening. And I want you to know that your names will be put into a drawing at the end of the school year. We will have a drawing for a couple recipients to receive some Chromebooks. So good luck on the drawing at the end of the school year. And we will take a brief moment. For anybody that wants to duck out, you're welcome to stay, but we will take a brief moment for you to leave if you'd like.
Highly recommend. No, this will be.
I don't know what they're missing. It's a short.
Congratulations, John.
Well, there really isn't much here.
No, this is.
You know, we named our daughter Alana.
So why are you going up full-time?
Four years. That's his dream to mine gold full-time.
Hey, Jeremy.
Hey, Jeremy. Take care. Good to see you, Nick.
All right, so we had no one sign up for appearances. We will move on to the approval of our regular session meeting minutes from Monday, September eighth. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Minutes have been approved from September eighth. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have three employment resignations and seven employment recommendations. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the consent agenda has been approved. All right, next, we get into our report section, and we have a Wisconsin School Board Week, October sixth through the tenth. Whereas the Rice Lake Area School District recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas the Rice Lake Area School District appreciates the vital role played by the local school board, which establishes policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. And whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interest to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal law. And whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, talents as advocates for our schoolchildren and communities' future. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs to the school district, to the public, and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rice Lake Area School District recognizes and salutes the members of the Rice Lake Area School Board by proclaiming October sixth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Wisconsin School Board Week. And I would entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that has been proclaimed. Next, we have the minutes from our curriculum meeting on Tuesday, September sixteenth. We met at five thirty. We had all board members present, along with some staff and one community member. And we started off hearing about the summer trip, the Spanish trip for twenty twenty-seven. They're making plans for that eight-day trip to go to Costa Rica, and it sounds like a really, really fun trip. Had a few people volunteer to go along with if they needed any extra help, but they.
How's your Spanish?
That was the question. Wasn't me, it was Bert. And Bert doesn't speak much Spanish, so he got disqualified. It sounds like a really good trip. They've got a good plan in place. It's a company they work with is out of Wisconsin, out of Green Bay. They've been in business for forty-some years, and so they've got a good plan in place for those students that are going to go to Costa Rica. And then we talked about the literacy intervention, the STARRY program that was being introduced this year to the district. We had some good discussion with our staff and asked for a few changes. They'll be coming back to the committee in November with those changes, and they're moving forward. So we then adjourned, and we, our next meeting date is October twentieth at five o'clock here in the administration building. Any questions?
Is the STARRY, is that something we're looking at adopting or already adopted?
It's just an intervention, so it's not a full curriculum. It's just an intervention curriculum.
Okay.
And so it's in place at a certain level as we speak.
Good.
All right, then we have our second reading from the Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting. The policies and rules that were brought forward in our last meeting for the first reading are now back for the second reading. I'm not aware of any changes that were requested or talked about, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve those policies, rules, and exhibits.
I would move to second the policies.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and policies have been, exhibits and rules have been approved and accepted. So then we'll move into our information section, where we have our W A S B policy correspondent update. Phil, what do you got for us?
First of all, I'd like to thank Don for stepping in last week. I was listening very carefully to that. I know. I didn't do you proud. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I tried. Thank you for doing that. There's not too much going on in the legislature yet. From the blog, the Office of School Safety wants people to know there are a few more resources up to use for Speak Up and Speak Out. I've talked a little bit about Assembly Bill one ninety-six, which has a companion Senate bill, which is the bill that would allow renew- annuitants, for instance, teachers that retired after seventy-five days, go back to work. And the school district would continue to pay the appropriate share into the retirement fund. Well, that was scheduled for a vote in the committee. It has to be voted out, a committee to the floor, and it was pulled from a committee vote. And they didn't say why on the blog. I called, I texted Dave and asked him, and he said he was going to find out for me. So hopefully I'll present that soon, because law enforcement and firefighters have a companion bill, sort of, and jailers and protective occupations. They apparently are going to be allowed to do that, so I don't know what the hang-up is here. The party's at a press conference and stated their priorities for next year. The Democrats generally stated their priorities, they increased school aids and free meals for kids. Republicans were mentioning Act Twenty-type legislation for math, so like, I'm blanking in terminology, but to make sure that kids know their basics in math, just like the Act Twenty for reading. Federal side of things, end of fiscal year is coming up, September thirtieth, and as usual, no budget has been passed, and as usual, they need to pass some form of budget to keep the government open, or not a budget, but a continuing resolution. And as usual, there's to be great drama with that. The House has passed a clean extension, but Senate is a question because they need Democrat votes to reach the threshold of sixty this time. As far as the spending goes so far, what might go into that continuing resolution? The House, in their extension that they passed, is proposing a cut in Title One. So far in the Senate, they're proposing to spend more. Title Two was eliminated by the House. The Senate's keeping that. Title Four A, the House kept the same funding level, and in Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea, both Houses gave a slight increase. I just want to review that, because you hear this Title One, Title Two, et cetera, all the time. And I did just a little bit of research on that to educate myself. The Basic Education Act we're talking about is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five, which is part of L B J's Great Society War on Poverty program, which is part of Great Society. E S E A, and that's been modified and reauthorized by Congress a number of times. It was modified nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy-four, No Child Left Behind in two thousand and two was a modification, introducing testing regimes designed to promote standards-based education. And then in twenty fifteen, E S A, Every Student Succeeds Act, was another modification, which retained some of the No Child Left Behind points, but shifted responsibilities to the states. And the titles of this education act, I mentioned, I'll just mention a couple. There are at least eight. And it's confusing, because there are titles of the Civil Rights Act too, but we're normally concerned with the titles of the Education Act. So you guys know all this. You're probably teaching your kids. So you guys know all this, you're probably teaching your kids this every day, huh? What the titles mean. Title I is the largest source of federal funding for K-12 schools. And it's it's meant to direct local funding for low achieving children in schools with high levels of poverty. And that's the one where I mentioned the House is proposing a cut in the spending one, the Senate wants to spend more. Title II A is seems to be cited, which the House wanted to eliminate, but the Senate wanted to keep. As a federal grant under the Basic Education Act designed to improve the quality and effectiveness of school staff by funding professional development programs and includes funds for school libraries, textbooks and instruct instructional materials. So I don't know what the reasoning behind the funding proposals is there. And Title III is targeted to help limited English proficient children, which I didn't mention, which wasn't mentioned in the blog. Title IV, where the funding is proposed to be kept level, concerns educational research and development, parental consent, prohibition on mandatory medications, technology grants, violence prevention, mental health resources. So all right, see if you can remember that because I won't be able to remember it. That's why I typed in my notes here. Upcoming meetings, legislative meeting is probably down south around usually around Green Lake someplace on November 8th. Maybe it's in Stevens Point this year. I don't know, you have to look it up yourself, but it's November 8th. Regional meeting is here in Rice Lake at Lehman's on October 15th.
And it is, it is in Stevens Point.
Okay.
This year.
November 8th.
November 8th. Yep.
Get a little duck hunting in with before the meeting.
Yep. And then other upcoming meetings, we've got the WSB 2025 Fall Regional Meeting and pre-meeting workshop held here in Rice Lake at Lehman's Supper Club. We've got a number of board members signed up. We're getting close to where we could have just about all of our board members there, which would be kind of a different thing. So that'd be nice. So if you can make it, let Clean know so she can get you registered.
Birthday, so I'm not sure.
And then there's some webinars, the Wednesday noon webinars, that registration is not required. So if you can attend those and then the convention coming up right around the corner in January. So if you can attend that, please let Clean know, registration is different this year. We need to know and get you signed up for a room sooner than later. Otherwise you who knows what hotel you'll end up at. So. And those the dates for the convention this year is January 20th through the 23rd. And that is our upcoming meeting schedule. Next, again, because we're back in session with school and the students are in the buildings, we've got two great students joining us this evening. And if you want to introduce yourselves and then the floor is yours. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Porter Corbin. I'm a junior class rep.
And I'm Sophia Winfield and I'm also a junior class rep. So most of you probably know, but we have freshman first day, which is pretty much just a day where freshmen come to school when there's no one else there. And we've gotten feedback that it's not maybe as memorable as we'd liked it to be. So we tried to implement some things this year that would make it a better experience for the incoming freshman. Like this activity, the picture on the bottom is home rooms had to compete against each other and try to flip a tarp over without anyone stepping off of it, which was challenging for a lot of students, but they were definitely students that took the lead and got their classmates on the other side. And then of course Rachel Rachel's challenge, which we do every single year, which is just pretty much a story about a school shooting and students pledging that they won't ever do that. And then also outside is the them learning their class cheer that they'll use for the rest of their high school career. And then also on the first real day of school, we have senior sunrise, which we have every year and sixty-seven seniors attended, which is about a little less than half of their class. So it was a good turnout.
It was cold.
It was.
These are some photos from our pep assembly. We did our class cheer. Yeah.
Can you demonstrate?
Yeah.
Full disclosure.
Yeah, we played some games. We played a game where you tried to knock the pizza box out of students and teachers' hands and that's when standing.
Did it have pizza in it?
Sadly, no. Then we also played a balloon popping game, which. That, yeah, relay race, kind of. It was fun. So this is our homecoming week, I guess. First, we kick it off with an assembly this Friday. I don't really know what we do there. Okay, well, assembly next Friday, weeknight events, dress up days, spirit stick and teacher of the week, which we have more information on the next slide.
So this Friday, we have our kickoff assembly, which we just hold in the auditorium and it's where we introduce the spirit stick and it's each class's opportunity to earn their first points for the homecoming week, for their chance to win the to the spirit stick. And we have played Mario Kart the past couple of years, which I think we're probably going to do that again. We had some suggestions for other games, but Mario Kart seems to be a fan favorite. So that's one way that students earn points. Then we also have the teachers do just dance. So we have one teacher from each like homeroom grade and whoever wins gets their class point.
The assembly next Friday indicates the end of our homecoming week where we announce our winners and of the spirit stick competition and celebrate all the sports teams.
And then our first weeknight event is Sunday night in Oley, we have dodgeball. So pretty much you just have eight students from each grade, but there can be more than one team, but eight students per team, four boys, four girls, and they battle it out and see who wins. And then whoever wins the tournament gets points for the spirit stick. And then on Monday, we have girls capture the flag, which pretty much all of your grade, there's so many people on the field just playing. And then again, whoever wins gets points for the spirit stick. On Tuesday, we do boys volleyball during resource. That's definitely been fun. The they like to dress up for that and have themes, which they're coming up with some good ones this year, so. And on. I think it's on Thursday. Yeah. On Thursday night, we have a bonfire after the soccer game, which is something new we're doing this year because before we haven't done it in homecoming week, but we thought if we did a homecoming week, we'd have a better turnout. So we'll see how that goes.
Next, we have our dress up days. On Monday, we have our class colors. And we have anything but a backpack day, which we've done before and it was pretty fun. Then we have a meme day, a decade day and a warrior day, which is just spirit day. Oh yeah, they voted on these, so this is what they want.
So what's a meme day?
I don't know, like there's so many, I don't, I don't know.
So you dress up as.
As like a.
Some meme that's popular out there. Okay. We didn't have those when we were kids. We didn't have memes.
But we had decades, but.
We did, yes.
Yeah, like each grade is a different decade from, I think, the seventies to the two thousands. So.
To the two thousands.
Yeah, I thought that was a little early too, but it's okay. And then the spirit stick, I already kind of talked about that, it's grade versus grade. The seniors on a streak this year, but I personally think that our grade is going to win this year. So. Black, the black tape needs to go, it's time, time for my class to have our turn. And yeah, dress up days, you also get points for that. So pretty much teachers, there's like a giant Google form that adds up all the point totals for each class. And so whoever wins like that day, they also get points, like the most participation.
And something we're starting this year is teacher of the week. Two teachers a week, they fill out a form, they put all their information on it and fun facts about themselves. Then we fill out a little poster about them, then we we post it on our social medias and our TVs around the school.
So we're bringing back the Homecoming Kids Fair, which we did, I think, a few years ago. We used to do it, but not since I've been in high school. And it's going to be right before the football game. We're getting a bunch of like sports and clubs to kind of make like a booth per se with like a game for elementary and middle school students play, just to kind of like get our community more togetherness because we've been looking for a way to involve the younger grades. But this seemed like the easiest way because it's right before the football game, so it's super accessible for people to come. And there's lots of room and it's outside, music, games, prizes, you know, fun. And then we also have a rake and run, which we've been doing. It's October 25th through 26th. If anyone wants to sign up, you can scan that QR code. This is also a great way for us to get community, community service hours and also bond with our leadership members and give back to our community for everything that they do for us.
What is this?
I didn't make this. Rice Lake Community thank yous. Thank you to John Johnson Motors for first week teacher goodies. Domino's Pizza for our Warrior Leadership Team fundraiser, which ends on October 1st. Thanks to Mr. Buckman's class for making our Warrior Leadership Team suggestion boxes. Mrs. Amos class for making our Hoco giveaway merch. And thank you to FBLA Forest Run, all the participants, participants and sponsors last Saturday. Thank you.
I heard a little bit about that Domino's Pizza. That Domino's Pizza fundraiser, that sounds like a pretty good deal for the buyer and the students, so. So that's you buy one and you get one free.
Unlimited.
And they get half the half those.
Well, that's a lot. That's awesome.
So it's a.
Pizza, email me.
Any other questions?
Porter, Porter gets some of his community hours in because he's a Chamber of Commerce Young Ambassador.
All right, thank you for that report.
Thanks, Tab.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our district administrator comments.
Yeah, just a couple of extra pieces. I think Rice Lake High School Parent Teacher Conferences are this Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30. So parents, if Mr. Polkey had sent out an email previously, if you want to sign up for a slot, you're able to do that. And then it's a bit a little ways off yet, but the Rice Lake High School cast and adults involved are working on Mamma Mia, the musical that's going to be coming. I'll just get those these dates out there, Thursday, November 13th, and then Friday, the 14th, and Saturday and Sunday, the 15th and 16th. So the Thursday and Friday performances at 7:00 PM, the Saturday and Sunday performances at 2:00 PM. I think I looked at the Mrs. Kinzinger had the cast list available today and I think there's about forty students involved from the high school. So that's impressive to see and you know, it's going to be a good one.
All right, thank you for that. Next, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight, five, one, F and one E. And that is for approval of our minutes and then an individual employee contract.
Move to go to closed.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lori Zarbar. Don Cuskey. Andrew Coop.
Yes.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Yes.
Marion Barbara. Bert Richard. Nellie Shire.
Yes.
And Doug Kuchko.
Yes.
All right, we are headed to closed.